Good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the January 9th, 2017 city of Kingston Plague meeting. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Few housekeeping issues before I make the number of precautions. I ask that everybody would silence their cellphones this time, please. In case of emergency, we have exits either side of the room here. We're not going to use the elevator if there's a need to evacuate the building. Bathrooms are to my left outside this door. And I ask that everybody respect the speakers when they come up to the microphone. My name is Wayne Platt Jr., I'm the chairman. We also have John Dwyer Jr., who was the vice chairman, Robert Jacobson, Charles Palago, Jonathan Corn, William Tubby, and we also have the planning director Suzanne Cahill and assistant planner Kylo Haber. Item number one, our agenda is open public speaking. We allocate 15 minutes for this purpose. Doesn't necessarily have to do with anything on our agenda. Just a preface, for anybody who's wishing to speak on 300 Flatbush tonight, the Ruppco project. We aren't scheduled, we have scheduled a public hearing for February 28th, 2017. That'll be 6 o'clock here. So the public will have an opportunity to speak on this subject.
And there'll be a presentation prior to that, and there'll be a brief presentation in a second.
As Sue just said, there's going to be a brief presentation by Ruppco tonight. What number do they have in the agenda here? We're number nine, we're the last item on the agenda. And at the public hearing, they're also going to make a presentation there too. So I just want to let everyone know that the public will have an opportunity to speak at that public hearing. Having said that, if there's anybody willing, wanting to come up to the microphone. Hi Fred. Fred, Fred Havers at the microphone, just state your address, please.
Yes, Fred Havers, 61 Tammany Street, Kingston, New York. And I want to talk a little bit about 300 Flatbush. My concern is, I was a sewer foreman for the city of Kingston until 2009. I know the sewer system on Flatbush is out of its capacity. When they built the Berches, that put a big burden on the sewer system with Flatbush Avenue open to the county at the time. That was also a burden. It managed to get by though. If you add anything else to that sewer system, we're going to have trouble. And who is going to absorb the cost when you have to replace that sewer from Farnes Street to O'Neil Street? It's nine and a half feet deep, it's an 8A sewer lane, and firsthand, I know that that sewer is out of its capacity. I don't care what any engineering firm says, I've witnessed it, I've noticed that he had numerous claims for flooded basements on Flatbush Avenue, on Albany Avenue, and for somebody to say it's not going to be a burden on the system is absolutely wrong. And I hope you state that with consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hi, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm Hillary Harley, 25th Yale Street. Not going to talk about the Irish Cultural Center. Surprise. I just wanted to let anybody on this board know who is not aware yet, that there's a zoning amendment that's going to be coming up referred from the Laws and Rules Committee. It was suggested to them by the Building and Safety Chair, Tom Tiano. It's a proposal to amend the zoning codes to allow for the development of private parking lots in residential neighborhoods. And our group in McDonald and Roundout is concerned about it for various reasons. We feel that it would have adverse impacts on our residential neighborhoods. And I wanted to submit a letter that we submitted to the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission. So the way it works is, it went to Laws and Rules from Building Safety, then Laws and Rules was originally going to send it out to the common council, they took it back, and now they're referring it to the Kingston Planning Board, the Ulster County Planning Board, and the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission. I think it just arrived to you, so I don't think, it doesn't seem to be on your agenda tonight. But I just wanted to give you a heads up and just let you know that we have some concerns that we would like for you guys to consider. So we wrote a letter to the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission, weren't sure if it was going to be on the agenda last week, it wasn't. It'll come up in February. And we also wrote a letter to the common council when we thought it was going to go there. So if you don't mind, I'd like to submit that and if you guys can take it into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alderman of the 9th Ward. I've been requested by Ruppco residents, who probably is not going to be here when you come time for the public hearing that I'm talking about in a couple of months or next month. And it's from Mark and Keith Phillips. I don't know the number, but it's Andrew Street in Kingston, New York. To whom it may concern, we are against the Ruppco project at the former Alm's House. We have been residents in the city of Kingston for seven years now. My husband and I bought our home here as the city was the closest place at a two and a half hour, 80-plus miles per day commute to his job that we could afford. Everyone expects their taxes to grow a little each year, but what the residents of the city of Kingston do not expect was to be continuously shouldering the burden of low-income housing. A majority of the residents here are not wealthy. Where do you think we can get all this money from to pay for these housing projects? Maybe if there wasn't at least four other low-income housing properties currently in Kingston, plus another one slated to go in on Cedar Street, we'd be a little more accepting of this request for the Alm's House. How about showing consideration to the taxpayers here and start getting businesses in that would contribute to the tax roll? Furthermore, why does the city of Kingston have to shoulder the burden of all the low-income housing? We are not the only place available. There is plenty of space in other municipalities if you just look. As it stands now, you are pushing the very hardworking men and women of this city to the breaking point, and we can't afford it anymore. Thank you.
Alderman, can we, we have, we can even make a copy of it.
You can keep it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi Cassandra.
Hello. My name's Cassandra Burke, Little 117 R. M. Drive. Last month, I spoke about the long-term financial and social benefits that permanent support has and provides for our community. This month, I'd like to say a bit about the need for this type of housing in Kingston and greater Ulster County. Some had cited there are more than enough shelters and other facilities for the homeless. However, I believe the numbers tell a different story. According to the Homeless Shelters and Homelessness in New York State Report published by the Comptroller's Office in June of 2016, Ulster County serviced a total of 1,178 people through a combination of emergency shelters, transitional housing, and permanent housing services. This total is higher than the surrounding Duchess and Orange Counties, even though their number of homeless on any given night is higher. This suggests that there are a large number of families and individuals faced with housing crises and financial instability. Indeed, with 60% of renters in this county paying more than 30% of their income toward housing, this is not hard to fathom. The vast majority of the homeless population in Ulster County suffer with mental health or substance abuse problems. And if they're to ever become stabilized and achieve self-sufficiency, they will need assistance in overcoming their obstacles. The Landmark Place Project on Flatbush Avenue is prepared to offer these services along with permanent housing, and in addition to placing the former Alm's House on the tax rolls for the first time in its long history. I encourage you to keep these facts in mind, considering whether or not to approve the site plan and environmental review of the project as a whole. Take care.
Can you ask her if she can email her students?
Cassandra, did you get an email at this time? Anybody else? Okay. At this time, we're going to close the public speaking portion. We'll move on to item number two on the agenda, adoption of the December 12th, 2016 Plague ordinance. Everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at them. Is there any questions? Comments, changes recommended? All right, at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the December 12th, 2016 Plague ordinance. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay, moving into public hearings. Item number three is 69 Spring Street, special permit renewal for a two-room bed breakfast, section block 56.42-7-14, secret determination zone RT, Roundout West Historic District. Ward A, Barabell Run radius is the applicant owner. Is there anybody besides the applicant owner wishing to speak on item number three? Okay, anybody has a microphone? Belle, you want to come on up?
Come right around here. Come right around, we're going to have you sit there.
Yeah, we changed things up since you were here last year. Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year.
All right. Have there any changes? Anything?
Uh, um, fact that more than buses are opening up.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Business is good?
Uh, it could be better now with Airbnb. It's taking, I'm experiencing a little, yeah, loss.
And the original plan was created in February 2004, and has been renewed and played for six. Everything's good with the staff?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, the Airbnb, because you've probably done the research, reminding that these are apartments or houses that are, people are renting more.
Microphone, listen.
There are two houses. Obviously, yeah, over 3,000 houses, it would stop alone if it was happening in the area.
And have you seen a lot of houses in the city that are on for rent, or you mostly be out of properties?
You got the microphone closer to you.
We're just asking these Airbnb activity that the applicant has seen as it's in surrounding communities, or is it in Kingston, in the apartments, in the single-family homes?
It is all of the above. It's everywhere. Yeah. In fact, I have suspicion the tents are there right now, and I know there's three vehicles in their driveway. I'm pretty sure they rented the house out on Airbnb, so.
So why is that permitted? I don't understand why they don't come every year.
We don't have any laws regulating Airbnb notebooks.
They're regulated as a regular rental unit, so if you wanted to, if you owned a property and wished to rent your house out, you could do that, you advertise. It's basically an advertising mechanism. It's not a bed and breakfast, per se, by our definition, under the code. And that is something that we are currently looking at.
We do too, because I've seen a lot of people in the neighborhood as well. And it's not fair to people like Belle. I have one that stayed with her, she has a great girl who are, you know, doing the work.
Right.
What's that?
Yeah, same thing. Same thing. Can't hear.
You have to speak.
I was just saying, it's unfair to people like Belle who come in for approval every year and run BNB's as well as she does, that the others are going unsupervised.
Thank you.
So Sue, is this something that's being looked at through Laws and Rules, or zoning?
It's in zoning code update.
The whole of the process?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Local law says we can only have a maximum of one year renewal. Is that correct?
That's correct. That is being looked at as well.
Okay. Under secret, it's a type-two action, predetermined to have no rental impact, no further review of the board is required. So at this time, we'll make a motion that we approve item number three for a period of one year with all original conditions carried forward. Second? Second by John Palago, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number four, public hearings. 88-110 Roundout Landing, special permit renewal for restaurant use, secret determination, section block 56.43-6-3 and 4, zone RF-R, it's imperative area. Ward A, Roundout Landing LLC is the applicant. JKJ Properties LLC is the owner. Is there anybody besides the owner or applicant wishing to speak on item number four? Seeing nobody at the microphone, Mr. Amato, you want to come up? Right, 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 right around here. How you doing, sir?
Good.
Good. Can you state your name, please, for the record? All right, the original application was approved in March of 2004. Most recent approval was in December of 2014 for a period of two years. And the restaurant has changed ownership since the last approval. And it's currently under the name of Paul Savannah. Any questions, by the way? I see some questions on the lease here.
Both properties are included. Both properties are included on the lease for restaurant use?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. And what, I'm sorry, what is the term of the lease?
It's 20 years.
20 years.
Police incidents, you have made, I got notes here, it says you have made positive changes to reduce the number of calls and addressing improper behavior, so that's been good, thank you. And you've hired security?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we don't really do the nightclub thing, so.
Right.
On the occasion that we do have some entertainment, we do have security.
Okay.
But we also don't do anything after midnight.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, what are the current hours of operation and days of operation now that you operate, so we can reflect it?
We open for lunch 11:30 every day, depending on what season it is this time of year, 9 o'clock during the week, 10 on the weekends. In the summertime, it's 10 p.m. during the weekend, 12 o'clock on Friday.
So last approval was for two years, Sue?
Yeah, the last approval was for two years.
We recommended two again, we haven't had any issues?
Yes.
I was going to suggest that it's slightly longer to, there have not been issues as long as they abide by all the original conditions. If we start having police issues, but there have not been any incidents as in the past.
Where would you go for a term?
I'd go to three.
Three.
Say, anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Under secret, again, this is a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required this time. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number four for a period of three years with all of the original conditions carried forward. Do you have a second? Second by Jonathan Corn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five, still doing public hearings. 300 Wall Street, it's a special permit to operate a nine-room hotel and ground-floor restaurant, secret determination, section block 58.331-1-19. It's in zone C2, it's in Stockade Historic District. Ward 2, Hudson Valley Case and Development LLC is the applicant owner. Is anybody besides the applicant or owner wishing to speak on item number five? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, item number five. We have Scott Dunn here at the table, welcome.
Thank you. Charles asked me to apologize, he couldn't be here tonight, but he's stuck in New York. And what I passed around are the revised floor plans showing the nine rooms and photo simulations that were circulated last night.
Scott, I'm just going to ask you to use the microphone.
Sure. What was the, what did you find with your client, was the reason for dropping the number item?
Well, we had, we had layouts for nine, 10, and 11 rooms. And, you know, initially, the drive was to get as many rooms as possible, we did only have. And then after studying all of the options, they realized that the nine rooms allowed for nicer rooms, more generous proportions, and in particular, Robert Tanner's former office, which is a nicely appointed, big panel room on the second floor, we managed to preserve that and keep it as a very nice room. You know, it's 472 square feet, which is large.
Sure.
But it'll make for a unique experience. And Kylo was kind enough to circulate some questions that I'm prepared to answer this evening. The refuse will be by a private hauler, for sure. And in terms of the operation, it's common in the boutique hotel industry for the developer-owner to be the operator or a partner in the operating business. Only when you get to much larger hotels is there a separation there. So Charles will have a hand in that, as well with the restaurant downstairs that's to be leased out. Because there's such a synergy there, and patrons can actually pass through the restaurant lounge spaces, he's not, Charles won't be the restaurateur, they're saying, but there'll be a relationship there so that he can maintain operations and support the hotel. If you look at the first floor plan, you'll see that the hotel lobby and the restaurant spaces are not separated by a demising wall. So we solve that problem from a building code standpoint with what's called a wand door. So the fire door is in fully retracted position, and you can have a nice, open, spacious, grand lobby. And then in the event of the fire alarm going off, this accordion fire ring door closes down and you have your egress separation. In terms of the signage and the lighting, they don't have a logo yet, so it's premature to have any signage or lighting to review. So the next step, what we'd like to do, as soon as this board makes a determination on this project, is to commence some selective demolition. We've started the process with the Chippewa office pursuing historic tax credits and getting the building listed on the register. And we'd really like to get started. We've got six, seven months of construction ahead of us at least. And in that time, once the logo lands, then we can come back to the various boards, landmarks, heritage, and we're aboard for any amendments. And if, we can't really think of anything other than a small sign, which is all that's permitted in that district, and maybe a couple of small lights shining on. There's been no discussion of anything other than that because of the historic facade that we inherited.
You are adding a second entryway off of the John Street side?
Yes, and we did take that through the landmarks review. I've met with Deputy Chief Tiano and Joe Saffron, and it's an essential secondary means of egress. There's no way to adaptively reuse the building without a second means of egress. If it simply stayed as office space, it would be grandfathered, but any other use requires a secondary means of egress. And the landmarks commission did approve that door, which you can see photo simulations.
And the intent is solely for egress in case of emergency, but it wouldn't be an ingress? It wouldn't be an entryway?
Gone back and forth on that. That's something that ultimately the developer and the operator, you know, they'll have to come to terms with. It's mandated for egress. It's set up now so that it can be an ingress for the hotel. So it could go either way.
Okay, so it might have key entry or card entry?
Yes, absolutely.
By?
And one of the questions that was asked is, would there be a full-time reception or concierge? And the answer is, is no. You'll make your arrangements, and whether this ends up being the place where you pick up your key fob or it's someplace else, you'll have unfettered access, but it can be controlled by the fob. So we'll know when doors are opened and closed, and that's apparently how most of the boutique hotels are going these days. Because they're smaller and you can't afford to have a full-time staff person there. The laundry services and all of that, cleaning, will be handled on-site, and we've made provisions for central services in the building. And there was a question about the exhaust for the restaurant, and we're acutely aware of the controversy with some of the neighboring properties. So we did find a path, if you look at the floor plans closely, where the vaults are in the backside of the building, it's the sort of little L shape at the back there. That area goes up to a roof at the fourth floor. So we can penetrate through that roof and have the exhaust not be visible from the street. Seems like the only logical place to take the exhaust up. And it's, you know, it's a small space for a restaurant, and the operators that I've been meeting with, with Charles, have all said that, you know, it has to be light fare, it can't be, you know, a full commercial kitchen, there's just not enough seats there to warrant that kind of capital investment. There's not real estate there to fit in a massive commercial kitchen and walkings and whatnot, so.
All right. Okay. So I know you said you had like a four to six-month timeline that you're looking at for the renovation one? for the renovation work to be completed?
Correct.
So that puts you into midsummer?
Mm-hmm.
That's a reasonable expectation with the other reviews that are necessary?
I think we're through the other reviews other than Chippewa.
Right.
And Chippewa's probably the only thing that might extend that. And a lot depends on what the Chippewa office says on the first pass. I mean, we're doing minimal work to the exterior, so we're not concerned. I talked to Weston, Davey, about the door. It's clearly a requirement. I think our treatment will be well-received. The big question is, you know, how deep into the interior does the Chippewa office and the NPS reach? And what's their expectation of our preservation effort on the interior? There aren't that many elements that are historic on the interior, with the exception of the, the door to the vault on the ground floor and a couple of other little details. But you just don't know who you're gonna get as a reviewer, and how much they're going to obsess over some of those details. So it could be a thirty-day review at the state office, and then a thirty-day review in Washington, and we're good? Or it could be thirty days in all, in Peebles Island, then back to us for a revision, and then thirty days, and you just don't know. But, but the developer's ready, contractor poised and ready to start as soon as we have all the entitlements in hand.
What are we doing with construction and staging uptown? What are we doing with the constructions and the staging with respect to all the ripout and dumpsters and?
We'll, we'll have to request a sidewalk permit, and we'll have to have a roll-off out there for sure. You look at the existing floor plans, you know, there's a substantial amount of drywall and studs that will need to come out. But I think, you know, demo with a good crew is probably like a two-week exercise. The real question is, do we need a forty-yard roll-off, or can we live with some twenties during the construction period? And that's something that we'll have to review with DPW soon.
Right. Well, I would think, you know, you know, it's gonna be a full two weeks, I mean, parking is premium.
Yep.
In Uptown Kingston, so rather than a forty footer, rather ceiling a bit shorter.
Yep.
And just have it picked up and moved and brought back to the place back, I think that would be.
Yep. Tommy Rigasack has enough of those things, yeah, I'll just pull them twice a day, I'm sure he'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, we can do the two resolutions.
Yeah, but we're not gonna get into the rest of this stuff, this is later on.
We'll go through that with Scott.
Do we have any other questions in this?
No.
Okay, we're gonna deal with two resolutions. Two resolutions, we're gonna be dealing with this project. First one is a resolution declaring, declaring board as lead agency in the secret review.
We have.
What's that? Thomas with that?
Yep.
All right, reading them to the bottom here now, therefore be resolved by the City of Kingston Plating Board as follows. Section one, pursuant to six NYC RR, part six seventeen, the City of Kingston Plating Board hereby affirms its role as lead agency in the secret environmental view of the action as described. Section two, that all identified involved agencies will be notified of the Kingston Plating Board decision to act as lead agency. And section three, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. This time I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution declaring ourselves lead agency. I have a second, Robert Jacobson is the second on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Do you have one here, do you want to use this one? I have one until, I have one until it's up. Robert's the second.
I thought you were already circulated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been done.
Okay. Okay, the second resolution is adopt the determination of negative, it's a negative declaration of environmental significance for three hundred and one Wall Street. Reading that at the bottom here, now therefore be resolved by the City of Kingston Plating Board as follows. Section one, pursuant to six NYC RR, part six seventeen, of the City of Kingston Plating Board hereby renders a determination of negative environmental significance, recognizing all conditions as described within the document presented, and adopts the negative determination as filed. Section two, that all identified involved agencies will be notified of the Kingston Plating Board determination of this decision. Section three, that the Kingston Plating Office is directed to submit notice to the State Environmental News Bulletin for publication as required by the statute. And section four, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. This time I'll make a motion that we adopt this negative declaration of environmental significance, this resolution I have a second. Second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Is the B word comfortably included in the determination, provided that staff review Chippewa's comments with the applicant?
Mm-hmm.
And the other conditions will still apply, or you have to talk about it.
Okay.
I think you have no choice, Simon.
You want to do the button?
Yes, parking has to come first. Do you need more of these, or whatever you need?
You can have. Want a couple?
I'm just gonna throw them out.
I have mine.
Okay. You don't have an entryway.
Are you signing that, or are you starting?
While you're doing I's and T's there, I'll let you know that we tabled six oh nine to six eleven, but we're planning on coming back next month.
Okay.
You know, contemplating getting historic designation as well. Found some old pictures of it.
Oh, yeah?
Nineteen oh five.
All right, parking. Everybody's okay with granting a waiver for the parking requirement?
Yeah.
I mean, the building, the footprint of the building is the building, you know, property, so there is no other option.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we waive the parking requirement for this, for this property, second, second by Robert Jacobson, all in favor of that? Opposed? Carry.
Hello, it's going to be acceptable.
Yes, that's why we were gonna move on.
You're coming back to my two, that's last.
Sorry, under secret, sorry, just going over here.
Right, so the board calls for six, seven, seven A, twelve, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And also, they will award the staff on signage and lighting and the shipping process. And that would give staff prior.
Now you also have to come up with a staging plan with DPW.
Be aware of the blue stone sidewalk.
Yes.
Isn't that one of the policies?
Are you staging?
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna throw that.
Sue, are we, is this staging gonna be mostly on John Street?
Yes.
I'm just asking the question, is that what we're requiring?
Whatever the board prefers, I think it makes more sense to be on John Street.
Because we can, you know, get a chute out.
You don't have the canopy covers.
Right.
There's a way, we can hide it somewhere.
We can, we can drop a chute out.
Then we're also not affecting the pedestrian traffic on Wall Street.
Correct.
Well, she got a ball over the side.
We'll request a sidewalk closing permit for a short duration. It's all wood frame stuff, it's gonna come out quickly.
Oh, we're gonna go through some, on the signage level, through some sidewalks.
The woodwork on the ground floor?
And Chippewa.
It looks nicer than it is. It's basically been near progress. You know, we pulled it, we pulled some of it off, and there's some interesting stuff behind it that we're gonna do Chippewa office, like you.
Okay, we're good?
We're good.
All right. What about the term?
This is, no.
A C, such special?
It is S U T.
I mean, it needs to do a term.
How long's your construction?
One year for now, you think, just this one usually?
Yeah, but how long's your construction?
He said six months.
Six will probably stretch with the Chippewa review. They're not gonna be open for the summer season.
I'm being inclined to go to a one and a half year.
Yeah, I'm thinking, because, I mean, there's no point out of it.
That'll give them time to be construction, get up and running, and then we'll be able to.
Makes sense, or?
Yeah.
Right down, I feel your handwriting, this can be suspended.
You're gonna do eighteen months.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number five for a term of one and a half years with board policies four, four A, six, seven, seven A, twelve, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Also, it needs approvals from the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission.
We have.
Okay? But we just need documentation of the zone, you already got them. Okay, and other conditions are signing, signage and lighting details, blue stone sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, installation of a knox box.
Chippewa.
Yeah, refurbage from the State Historic Preservation Office, a staging plan for dumpsters with DPW. We already gave the parking waiver, and these items will be reviewed by staff. That is a motion, I have a second.
I have a second.
Second by Jonathan Corn, all in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
See you later.